2021. At seven oh three P M. I have regrets from Councillor McMyrdle. We have Councillor Ellsworth and Deputy Mayor Valentino on Zoom. In the chamber, we have Councillor Pro, Councillor Colburn, Councillor Landmark, Councillor Fountain, Councillor Wong and myself, Mayor Smith. First off, I'd like to say that I'd like to recognize we're a pretty fine land and we are all pretty people. Thank you. Next, I would make move to approval of the agenda. City manager.
Our recommendation to remove item seven point two from this night's agenda. Requires a moving sector. Too many agenda.
Councillor Landmark moves. Do we have a second or Councillor Pro a second? All in favor? Opposed?
I have seen.
Thank you. Do need to have a reason.
Should be obvious, but as I'm complaining, I don't feel it's appropriate to vote on.
Thank you. Next, we're going to the community comments and feedbacks.
We still need to move the agenda.
Oh, approval of the, oh, sorry, approval of the agenda. Did we get a sec? Yeah, a sec or approval of the agenda as amended. Councillor Pro, Councillor Landmark. All those in favor? Post?
It's the Councillor Ellsworth. Indicated.
Thank you.
That's the same.
Councillor Fountain is abstaining. For she conflict. Next, we go to community comments and feedback. We have ten minutes. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak? Please.
No, I have two questions. Ron monitor twenty eight. My first question is on seven point four. I don't see any supporting documentation on ventilation and exhaust ventilation for the fire hall. When I was on council, four or five years ago, we invested money in the the system that exists. Now, has that system failed? Why is it you're looking at spending more money? I assume money is involved. I can only assume because there was no supporting documentation.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll be getting to it in the in the in the meeting, but the supporting documentation that council can see. This is for the original ask, I believe, back when you were on council, was for a system that had movable parts. And at the time, council funded it so that the parts couldn't move. So the the system was put in place. The fire department applied for a grant from the province. And the province has paid to upgrade the system that the previous council approved to have the automatic detachments, some of the movable hoses and those sorts of things. And I believe maybe increase some of the ventilation that was going through the fans. So that being paid a one hundred percent by the prob provincial grant. That was this year's firefighters grant that was put up by Minister Squires when she was the Minister of Municipal Relations.
Good. Second question. You have two check registers on the agenda. I've asked questions in the past that I haven't received answers for, and the explanation was because CFO was not here, and I see she is not here again tonight. Why are you even bothering to put it on the agenda if the CFO was never here and therefore same old, same old. Well, she's not here, so you're not going to get any answers.
I do believe that we give the answers after you've gone. I've asked you in the past. If you've received the information requested, you've always said that. If you don't, I wish you would come to us and let us know.
Okay, my.
Get some tonight?
As as I understand it, my questions are to be answered at the following meeting. If I ask a public question, I want a public answer. Not an email saying, here's an answer to your question. I'm asking for the people of Thompson. I'm not just asking for me. I know most of the answers that I asked, but I want it to be known out there.
Okay, thank you then. Please, if you're requesting as such, just please make mention that you want an answer at the public meeting next time. I know they make a point, so.
I'll be back to the here at the next meeting for some answers.
Okay, all right. So is that based on tonight's question that you asked?
No, there's a couple of. I didn't bring my wallet. Couple of questions on the previous check register.
If I'll follow up with you, you know, make sure you get those answers for it.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Richard Fanch, Holden, Est and I are requesting some lot rental across the street from seven oh five pre moved. We're been doing this for approximately a year and a half now. Since last July, we had communications with engineer Gil. And we were ready about to issue a check to rent it. And nothing happened, nothing happened, and then we started communicating with the chairman. We're just wondering what what we can do here on leasing the land across the street from our property at this time.
The request for the lease had been brought to the development committee, and they had said they were prepared to lease that land at that time. I sent communication to one of your representatives saying, have you come to the meeting? The next meeting is actually on Tuesday where you could speak to the, sorry, Thursday.
Thursday the night.
This Thursday, this Thursday morning, I'd asked your representative to send forward any supporting documentation. So if it's maps or business, whatever it is, so that the committee can have a review and understand what their positions. But at the time, the committee had looked at it and said they weren't prepared to lease that land. So really, the way it works is the committee makes a recommendation to all council. The committee is a subgroup of councils. They have a look and then they make a recommendation for.
There's nothing here that supports that as far as the information. We could probably attend the D R C meetings September ninth. I guess we can apply for that to be there. And.
If you're interested in coming, you can attend the D R C meeting on the ninth. We need delegation. You have ten minutes where you can discuss directly to the committee what your concerns are, what you're looking for. They would ask you questions. They will then have their own discussion and make a recommendation, counsel.
How much time do we have prior to registering? Like twenty four hours is that?
Normally, it's ten days, but I know we've been going back and forth. If you'd like to wait another meeting after that, we could schedule a future meeting. They happen every two weeks.
How do we know who determines who gets property across from their place of work and who doesn't? Like we're in an industrial park where everybody that's in that industrial park is using property across from their from their lots.
Those are determinations. If they're owned by councils, council will determine whether it's a sale or a lease. So some of the lots on the portion that you're looking at have been sold. None of the other lots on that portion have been leased. And those are decisions that have been done through the development committee. There's other areas of town where they have those portions up. We have all the documentation for that. Everything that is leased or sold has to be done publicly. So all the records are kept for each sale or lease.
And who deemed our property across from our shop as a non, no, no parking area?
Members of the Development Review Committee weren't prepared to lease that with the information.
No, it was passed as no partner.
Pardon me?
It was passed as no partner.
The committee can't make a ruling as in terms of a sale. What they do is they make a recommendation to council. What was provided didn't go any further than that committee, but it's because the committee wasn't prepared to recommend a sale or a lease to council. That's why the offer was made for you to attend that meeting to make your case to the committee so they would understand what you're looking for.
But when was the property? Do you know parking?
That area has always been no parking. It's just been allowed to have parking for people who've been parking there. It's technically illegal to be parking in that area. There's been signs put up in the past and they've been taken down. The committee has looked at it and turned around and said, no, they've directed the administration to start enforcing that parking again. No parking.
Okay, well, we'll definitely look into that then. I guess we'll. According to your information, we can do the September ninth.
No, I said if you'd like to attend September ninth, you can. If you're not prepared, we can push it two weeks after to give you time to prepare. It's your option.
Yeah, no, that's fair. We'll do the application. Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other lengthy comments, feedback? Second time, any more comments, community feedback? Third and final time, any more comments or community feedback? Thank you. Seeing none, we will proceed. Next, we're going to adoption of minute five point one. For public hearing by law, two zero one four two zero two one on the sixteen twenty twenty one. Resolution number two zero two one, one to four, moved by Councillor Fountain, seconded by a Councillor Pro. And their result, the minutes of the public hearing by law, two zero one four two zero two one held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty one, be adopted as circulated. Councillor Fountain, any administration?
Much further.
Any other comments? Over the question, all those in favor? Are the ones of.
Yes.
Carrie. Five point two is the regular meeting of council of the sixteen two thousand twenty one. Resolution number two zero two one, one to five, moved by Councillor Pro, seconded by Councillor Fountain. Be it resolved at the minutes of the regular meeting of council, held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty one, be adopted as circulated. Administration.
No, not approved.
Council. Over the question, all those in favor? The two on the.
Yes.
Carrie. Seven point two has been removed from the agenda as per beginning of meeting. Seven point three is a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices.
There's think of six, six point one.
Oh, I'm at the wrong one here. I'm sorry.
The check register.
The check register report. Six point one is the June check register. Any questions from council? Councillor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Zero zero three two eight five two. And the check is two hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and thirty two dollars. Normally, I don't think we flow to that much, so I just wanted to have some explanation. Why is this so high this time?
And where is it?
To the map. Zero zero three two eight five two.
Sure. That was part of the reaching home. The community advisory board has allocated a grant to the maps program to open a second house. They currently have a house on Stanford Bay, which is for men, male sober living. They bought the house next door to become a female house for sober living. So that's the amount that was granted through reaching home to them. And as the entity, we flow the dollars that they allocate.
So that means the map changing a little bit of the model. This wasn't for men, not for female.
We're going to.
They're going to expand that service.
The name of the group is the same, but they've decided to provide a service to female now due to the success of their model with the male population.
Well, good for them. Anyway, thank you.
And and we did approve that at a council meeting for the.
But just the funding is just kind of offered to me.
Anything else?
No.
Anybody else question?
Councillor Ellsworth has his hand up.
Last.
You're muted, Les.
I think I was on mute there. I attended the finance committee and I asked a number of questions, which was duly answered. But I want to, I want to go back to some remarks that was made earlier in regards to the CFO. I can ask those questions certainly in finance. I did get the answers. But the public, when they got questions, they're not getting the answers on, let's tell it's in writing. And I think when we're looking at our quarterly reports, that's in the millions of dollars. I believe that we owe it as a council to have our CFO to be on end to ask the questions. Not so much from council, we get them. And and I think that's the place to have to have them answered is that finance. But when the public comes and there are there are a lot, there are ten minutes, they should be able to get an answer right then and there on the floor from CFO. So I'm going to make a request tonight that whenever possible, unless our CFO was sick or there's something going on that's that's family wise, they should be in attendance at city council meetings with, especially when there's a check register so they can answer to the people that elect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor.
Just a quick point to clarification if administration was. When we flow through dollars to an organization, and maybe we did, but they're not a process other than zoning, the the approval comes through council for the flow through itself.
The approvals are already given by council when you sign agreements with the government of Canada. So the way that the dollars flow and the way that the money is moved was all part of those original agreements, which is why we engage the services of a coordinator for that program. She oversees the paperwork, which she does. She brings it in. It's reviewed by a finance team. If they say that everything's kosher, then the mayor and I sign off on it. And the funds flow from the federal government to the agency.
So it's a blank approval for all.
That's right. And if there's any amendments or changes that have come to council.
Anyone else? Like you? Okay, I would, I would just like to comment on having the CFO. I believe that is a conversation we will have to have. Because one of the things is was the discussion that we've had in the past about budget items and wages and that that are paid over school for hours that are here. So that's definitely a question that we can have at a finance committee. And next, we're going to move to the July check registers. Any questions on them? They've seen that we'll accept these reports as information. Thanks for moving to resolutions. Seven point one is a resolution to approve the Grant and Lou negotiating committee. Resolution two zero two one, one to six, moved by Councillor Landmark, seconded by Councillor Pro. Whereas the city of Thompson, the school district of Mystery Lake, and the local government district of Mystery Lake are signatories to a Grant and Lou G I L agreement, which stipulates annual payments from valet, and each organization is set to expire December thirty first, two thousand forty one. Now, therefore, be resolved that council is appoint Mayor Smoot, Deputy Mayor Valentino as Mayor Smoot's alternate, Councillor Landmark, Councillor Pro, and Councillor Ellsworth to the Grant and Lou negotiating team. Administration.
The negotiations of valet are held every four years. It's on multiple parties, so it would be valet negotiating with the city of Thompson, the school district of Mystery Lake, and the local government district of Mystery Lake. All the other organizations have put forward their names of representatives, and now it's up to the city to make their representatives.
Thank you. Councillor Landmark is mover.
Oh, we had this special special meeting, and I thought it was agreed to one more forward. We prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, councillors? Councillor Fountain?
I'll just indicate for council and the public, which I will not be voting on this topic through my appointment with valet, so I'm requiring a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. You got that. Councillor Colburn?
Well, I don't support this resolution. One, because who is the lead investigator? There's no lead investigator appointed here, and we must need a lead investigator. Secondly, I think the mayor should recuse himself. If you want a reason, I'll give it. If not, I'm okay with it. Well, I think you should recuse yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from councillors? And after you have their hand up?
Well, there's also.
Who has?
Councillor Ellsworth.
Councillor Ellsworth.
Thank you, Mayor Smoot. I just want clarification for the public. First of all, I certainly look forward if this resolution passes to represent the city. But my question is this. Are we negotiating or are we just signing the document? Because I get mixed up into what we're doing. I believe we're negotiating, but I would ask the mayor to clarify.
Basically, it is called a negotiation. That is what we're going in there to do. It'll plan the next four years. We we set up, we bring our wants and needs to the table. We school board, local government district does the same thing. And valet responds to our needs, and then the negotiations start from there on. Okay, anything further? Duncan?
Thank you, Madam Me. Here's my thought about the G I L member. Anybody want to put a name forward to be the member of the negotiation? You should be able to take the criticism because this is important. What I learned from last time, because of the negotiation team, to me, is failed to the city of Thompson and causes ten point five million dollars shortage. So now, moving forward, when I look at the team, the only person I really think I will have the skill of negotiation would be Councillor Ellsworth because he'd been doing negotiation. So he understands what is negotiation thick face. But reading the P R F P, R F Q and all that is not negotiation. Looking at the document to approve the amount is all budgeted anyway. So that's not negotiation. And to me, when you cheat me, when you when you cheat me, shame on you. When you cheat me twice, shame on me. I had the mayor before on the negotiation team. With all due respect, because you are the mayor this time. Somehow, there will be you'll be the lead for this negotiation because of position. But I like to see someone else take the lead for this time to have a totally different met mindset for going into the room. And I don't want to talk much about the E camera, what we say, what we did. But I think somehow, when I look at the the number of the people that on the committee, I really have no hope for that negotiation. So with that, because of the name worries listed on this resolution, I will not support this unless there's some amendment going on to point a leader to lead. The rest is just to support. Otherwise, this will be, I would not be supported, and I will ask whatever we call it, well, thanks.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Valentino has a hand up.
Pardon?
Deputy Mayor Valentino has her hand up.
Jonathan?
Thank you, Mayor Smook. Yeah, I'm going to be supporting this resolution as is. It's important to note that at the end of the day, this is council's direction that they give to this committee or that this Grant Lou negotiating team. So and at the end of the day, it's all of council that votes once this comes back to council. And they are just our spokesperson. It is us in council chambers that are giving the direction of what we want to see and set the mandate. So the mayor, I always believe, and we were told that when we started in our training, that the mayor is the spokesperson for the city of Thompson. There are many other parties that sit at this committee. There'll be the school district, there'll be the province, valet, and the city. So it's not just us and valet in the room. So I look forward to the team following forward with what all of us as councillors give them the direction to do. So I'll be supporting this as is. Thank you.
Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Me. Allow me to say one more time. We already give the list, majority of the council already give the list, what they want to see different. That's all you need, Cameron. When I look at the list, it just tell me we have no way to do a better job. I already have my input. My input is not on the list. I already told Councillor Ellsworth privately what I like to see changes. So hopefully, he can do something else for that. And based on the list, I look at it. Not really strong, not really strong. So that's why I cannot support this ideology of negotiating with the second largest, I believe, mining company in the world. We have no way to hop or stand when it comes to this. Thank you, Madam Me.
Thank you. Okay, I think it's important that we do set up a negotiating committee. It is into September. We do have to start making. Previously, Mayor Fenske stepped away because he wasn't employing the valet. I will not step away as I was chosen at the meeting to be part of it, and that is where I stand. Thank you. Councillor Colburn?
Okay, reason why I asked you to step aside is ankle just, well, I'm sorry, valet just announced a hundred and fifty million dollars investment in this community, right? Where was that announcement made? From your campground? Now, it does not reason enough to recuse yourself. There's something wrong with our process. Right? Because you're directly involved with valet. And now you want to be on a negotiation and the lead negotiating. Right? Our sorry citizens don't have a chance. Don't have a chance.
Nobody is lead negotiator. You have chosen a negotiation team. When we come out and speak, I am the one. The whole table speaks and makes makes the recommendations and negotiates back and forth. My campground was rented for an event. I had no idea even what it was going to be. That's what I do. If I do rent my campground out for events, so thank you. I do not feel that that is confidential. Okay, without me in there, we call for the question. All those in favor? If I recorded vote as requested by Councillor Wong, all those in favor, we've got Councillor Pro, Councillor Landmark, Mayor Smook.
Councillor Ellsworth, Deputy Mayor Valentino.
Councillor Ellsworth, Deputy Mayor Valentino, opposed. We got Councillor Wong, Councillor Colburn, and abstaining is Councillor Fountain. Thank you. Carrie.
Good luck.
But not to me.
Seven point three is a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the purchase of highway core soap and sand mixture. Resolution two zero two one, one to eight, moved by Councillor Landmark, seconded by Councillor Fountain. Dear resolve, the council approved the recommended of the purchasing agent and award the purchase of highway core soap and sand mixture to smook contractors lifted smook for a total of forty five thousand, two hundred dollars with additional taxes as per file number one three five two one. City administration?
Yes, this is an annual purchase that is made by the city Thompson Public Works Department to provide them with a sand and salt mixture to apply to the sidewalks as well as the roads throughout the city during winter season.
Thank you. Councillor Landmark as the mover.
Then we discuss this for finance and better develop this, make sure that we have that material here before it's still in council.
Councillor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Me. Quick question. How much sand solid sand left from last season? Do we have the number?
I don't have the numbers in front of me. No, I do know that last year we spent about eighty thousand dollars in sand and salt mixtures.
Because I drove by, Madam A M S, continue, because I drove by the C D R, there's still a lot of treated sand sitting there. My real point is, every year, we order four thousand tons of sand, solid sand, regardless. We don't look at the math, how much we use. So to me, looks like they want to burn the budget just to order the four thousand tons every year, every year, same amount. Doesn't matter you use more, use less, you still use the same amount, order the same amount. This is not how I run the business. I think somehow, the researcher should give us a report, how much left? Then we order whatever. If let's say four thousand ton is the the number to keep as a stop. I agree with that. Just prevent in case someday we need more. But if you only use two, we order two thousand. Why we always order four thousand? That that part I really don't understand. Every year, I see that four thousand, four thousand, four thousand. So somehow, I think something we need to change. I don't know what the the committee that did beside approving the finance or the 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 public work, they're proving the the purchase. The finance or the 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 public work, they're proving the the purchase, because it's in the budget. But my my real question is, why are we continue buying four thousand every year regardless? Something is wrong there. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and ask a recallable piece.
Thank you.
My understanding, talking to the finance department, is that we actually needed more than four thousand tons lost. So if there is some left, they actually have to do some additional purchases due to the changing conditions.
Thank you, any other questions? Uh, yeah.
Just a clarification, roughly five percent increase, I think, might have, right?
I couldn't tell you the percentage, but yes, it's about a. Hmm, looking at close to fifty five cents more per ton.
The. That drives with inflation, I'm just wondering, has there been an agreement in terms of inflated costs over the years, in terms of the contract over time? Or is this just imposed by the manager?
That's optional, because it was an R F Q, it was a request for quotes, it's done every year, anyone can respond to it and provide their pricing. And that would be brought forward, normally, if there was multiple vendors and it was within budget, the city would take care of this administratively, it's under fifty thousand dollars. But as there was only one bidder, then it has to come to council.
Yeah, so given that there's probably only going to be one bidder ever for the foreseeable future. Would it not be in the city's best interest to enter into a long term contract for the delivery of this? Material with inflation calculated in?
Um, not necessarily, there was similar questions about crushed rock that were brought forward. Many years, we only have one bidder, last year we had two, and we got a better price on the bidder that we hadn't expected to put in. And it's up to them to provide that material, so. Really, we can do it in council's direction however they want, but this was seen as a competitive way to do it.
Thank you, Under?
I have the same question of if we get a multi-year contract, it would be beneficial or not.
Okay, thank you, or less than Kathy's hands up, I can't see. Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor, recorded vote as per councillor Wong, please, all those in favor? In favor, we have councillor proof, councillor Colburn, councillor landmark, mayor spoke, councillor Fountain.
Councillor, Deputy Mayor Valentino.
Deputy Mayor Valentino.
Councillor, councillor Ellsworth.
Councillor Ellsworth opposed. A councillor Wong, thank you, Carrie. Seven point four is a resolution to approve the tabulation of prices for the supply and installation. Of vehicle exhaust removal system for the vehicles at the fire hall. Resolution two zero two one, one two nine, moved by councillor proof, seconded by councillor Fountain. It resolved that council approved the recommendation of the purchasing agent. And award the supply and installation of vehicle exhaust removal system for the vehicles of the. B P L sales limit for their tender price of ninety nine thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and sixty five cents, including P S D. As per tender file number one three zero two one, administration?
Yeah, as I mentioned before, this is the upgrades to the ventilation system that been requested by the fire department. It also includes a number of spare parts for commonly breaking pieces that have been included in this. The upgrades have been fully reviewed by the province of Manitoba, it's their grant that this has been put towards. So the proposed upgrades have been put in as a grant application, and the province of Manitoba selected this as one of their projects. So I wouldn't call it a flow through, but in a way, it's a grant that's paying one hundred percent of the costs.
Thank you. Councillor Pro?
Uh, no, just, it's good to have, it's nice, I didn't have to come over our budgets.
Thank you, any other councillor, councillor number?
I'd like to thank our administration on this one as well for applying for that grant. And getting these changes made for our fire hall that are needed for the trucks to run, you know, with the exhaust expanding. And this isn't coming out of our city budget, it's coming out of the grant. And we can only use that money on this item, we can't use it on anything else. And on top of it, the administrations worked with the province. And this organization to make sure that we're utilizing as much of that as we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, any other councillors? Hold on the screen. Okay, yeah, this is a. Very, very good news story for our city that we definitely need upgrades to the fire hall. Where it is and the equipment changes all the time, so it gets a bit harder to put it all in there, so. At least this is proving that our exhaust system and matches, making it safer for our employees down there. With that, we'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Deputy Mayor Valentino, all those councillors, Ellsworth are in favor.
There, there others, okay, thank you. It's Carrie. Next is resolution seven point five, a resolution to set the tax sale date. Resolution two zero two one, one three zero, moved by councillor proof, seconded by councillor lumber. Whereas on March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one, council passed resolution two zero two one, zero four two, approving. Twenty twenty is the tax sale year, now therefore, be it resolved that the tax sale date be set for March twenty fourth. Two thousand twenty two at nine A M in the city hall council chambers, administration?
Yeah, this is a housekeeping resolution that's required on the municipal act as part of the tax sale process. So this just formalizes the date that then can be published for the tax sale and potential auctions.
Thank you, councillor proof? Other councillors? Comments? Seeing none, open the question, all those in favor?
Yeah, you know.
Carrie. Okay, next we'll move to the mayor's report. This is from August seventeenth to September seventh, two thousand twenty one. The Thompson Community Development Corporation Board meeting took place August the nineteenth. Along with city manager Anthony McGinnis, we met with valet manager Gary Annette on August twenty sixth. Attended and brought greetings at this U S W Steelworkers Labor Day event on September sixth. And I would like to thank the steelworkers for putting on, basically, it was a drive by event. When I brought there, they had a walking station for people that were walking, and they had a drive through for pickup. And cars, and absolutely no one was turned away, and there was absolutely hundreds of hot dogs and hamburgers being given away, so. Thank you very much for the steelworkers, especially to the volunteers who, I know when I drove by, they're going to the plane at. Seven in the morning, there was already vehicles there, people getting prepared, so it was a long day for everybody, and. Hamburgers were delicious, so I'd like to thank them again, I would just like to remind people that school has just gone back in. Please be wary of the school district zones, thirty kilometers in the school zones, so that you don't get a ticket, and. Children are just getting used to walking back to school, riding bikes and that, and they aren't always vehicle savvy, so please watch for the children. Parents, please remind your children to push the buttons across walk, to look before they just run out and even on crosswalks, just to be safe. Safe on your way there, and thank you to all the teachers and everybody that's back at work. Thank you to the city of Thompson staff that, even though we were shorthanded this summer, has done their best to keep everything moving in that. And last but not least, let's welcome to fall, everybody, meetings are going to start again, we're going to. The mask mandate, we have to wear masks, again indoors, but please remember to self distance. Wash your hands as much as possible, use the hand sanitizer and that, so with that being said, is there all for me, is there any other persons that have some comments or questions? Kathy or Wes? Okay, seeing them?
I'd just like to congratulate the education teachers assistants and. Factory staff for their contract negotiation. Congratulations, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, yes, it is nice to see everything go back to normal. Okay, with that, I'll call for a German. Councillor Pro, councillor landmark, all in favor? Meetings adjourned, seven forty three, thank you.